Educating, Informing, Serving. TV, Keeping Government Honest.
We've got limited amount of time to do it because another meeting we might have to do is, but we're going to try your best. Is that acceptable to everybody? Phenomenal. So, we're going to start with the first one. In my world, this is called a SWAT analysis or a GAPS analysis. What is it that this place has? What is it this place lacks? What is it that this institution needs in order to be a better high school? Be the best high school in state of their mind. But let's aim high.
I'll interrupt just for a second. I guess I should say yes, but I'll say that. My name is Samantha Dybans.
Hi Samantha.
You've heard of my contact.
Yeah. And are you a parent? Who are you as a parent?
I'm a volunteer. I'm a parent. I used to be a reference board and tax payer. We have Robert here. We graduated from here ourselves, my husband and I. My daughter's a junior here at a high school. I appreciate everything you're talking about here, absolutely. But I feel like it is deterring from the purpose that a lot of us think we're here for.
All right.
I understand that this is trying to get to the point of what we need in our principal period. And I think maybe we have this discussion specifically about what Mr. Brody can do to meet all of these things. Because I think that's what a lot of us are here to discuss is the possibility of the board asking him to, you know, consider resigning, you know, withdrawing his letter and offering him a contract. And I think us spending a lot of time on this is going to take away time from people that have comments about that. Because we do have a limited time. So, I just feel like this is distracting from what a lot of people are here for. If we're here for Brody and supporting Brody, I don't understand. I'm not saying that there are changes that you shouldn't be making and we look at this sort of thing for what he can bring to the table. But I think that we all need to have the opportunity to speak about what we became to discuss. But then if we find out if that's going to happen or not, then we have this discussion.
I can't. At the same time, I want to make two things clear from my perspective. It's just my perspective, so I'm a civilian here. My goal was to address two things. One, we do want to have an open discussion about how we feel, going to further. But I also want to make certain that people know what it is a principal does. Because I'm not sure that that's necessarily clear to everybody. And I think it's hard to have a discussion about someone who's very hot for the committee. I recommended John Brody for the assistant principal when I was on his floor and hearing him reply. So, there is a good, if you like, John Brody. I'm putting up mine and most, I know a good part of the support is going to do the same. That's not, I want you to have your piece. But I also know that there is a process in place. You can be part of it if you want. But it's important for you to be on record as to what the principal does and whether or not you feel that you need or met. So, what I'm going to ask you to do, because I do recognize people want to talk about this and maybe five is not the time to do it. So, why don't we do, why don't we make this arrangement? Why don't we, people want to speak up perhaps from Mr. Brody. Maybe I'll join you. Let's try to keep it within about 90 seconds to a minute, minute and a half, something like that. Because there's 50, 60 people in the audience who never get to the thing that we wanted to do, which was to empower you in the process and where this is.
So, is this going to be just like all of our other meetings? Is this going to be like our other meetings where we get to stand up here and talk for our two minutes and no responses and no answers to questions?
Well, I'm trying to avoid exactly that. So, but I'm also trying to make sure that when you get them talking about our feelings about Mr. Brody, that when the board decides to take that advice or decides to go down the path of your feeling right now, that you have a path that gets you the person you want. Because one thing I've been here for people in the prior backpack of TV discussions was in fear that we would not be able to find anybody to chill, get attitude out of it.
I feel like that's a few of the board, not necessarily the majority of the community. Because I think the majority of the community feels that we already have our principal. Not to say he's perfect and not to say there isn't work that needs to be done and to hold a speech in the fire for making some changes. But I think the majority of the community feels we already found this person. We're wasting a lot of time and energy in this. And maybe it's a discussion on what needs to be improved versus who we're going to get. I'd be curious of who's already applied.
With all due respect, with all due respect, this is not a conversation between you and me. It's a conversation.
Well, I can't get a conversation with anybody.
We're having one right now.
Okay.
So, let me just say again that I want people to have their piece. But we have responses that are, no one, the, your permanent school sent in, he didn't resign. He simply sent in a note that he would not renew. Did not ask to the best of my knowledge to withdraw that. Or so.
Is it within the power of the board to ask them to reconsider that though? That's just a straightforward question.
It really shouldn't be.
But it is.
She mismanaged it more than I know. And I'm waiting for this statement because it needs to be stated. If any functional corporation, any functional institution had ever been associated with it and had been associated with a warrant, and somebody designed it, then I'm involved. If they, whatever that process was, that's not normally a withdrawal thing.
So, that's the board we have to just give that?
I think that, I'm talking about Dartmouth College where it actually happened. And just he said, "Sorry." So, I know that that's happened elsewhere. Just, I'm just letting you know that whether or not people decide to do that or not, I don't care. That's up to these folks, it's up to the community. So, what I'd like to do, since this seems to be really important here and I don't want you to not have that opportunity, I'm going to have you all wind up and I'm going to ask you to speak. And ask you to try to keep it to about a minute and a half soon because there's so many other people on the road.
Will we get a response?
You're not going to get a response to me because I'm not in charge.
No, we want a response.
This is not, this, right now, this is a community forum.
No, this is a school board meeting. It was posted as a school board meeting and I'd like it on record of the real reason this school board meeting got moved. The community forum was on Monday. Let me get to the mic.
Oh, no, you're going to laugh.
So, the community forum meeting that was posted for Monday got publicly told that it was changed due to weather. However, it's due to lack of proper warnings, right? It happens.
I'm the one that asked the superintendent to postpone the meeting because we had seen statements that the weather was going to be bad. So, I had, I just will tell you that, that I certified that Susan's fault here that she was wrong. I'll tell you what it was. I'm the one who did it. So, the board didn't do it, the board didn't do it because of any other reasons. I called superintendent and said, "I'm the one who did it."
So, I'd like to, David Park may speak to this topic.
David Park can pull the same thing. I'm just telling you that I'm the one who made it, made this call.
So, it was a community meeting on Monday and now it's an actual special school board meeting. So, to me, that means there's involvement with the school board. Is it not posted that way as a school board meeting? Did I not read that correctly? I think it checked it by now.
All I know is that I was asked to do this and I'm trying to.
And I appreciate that because it's not on this board.
You know, I get it, but there are other people who maybe want to yell too. And I don't want them to be the missed opportunity to do that.
I don't think you're yelling.
Let's have other people, if you don't mind, get other people.
But we want answers from the board.
Other people happy. Yes.
My name is Serena Higgy. I'm also a tax payer and an employee here. You made a statement that people haven't rescinded their, their notice. Mr. Hodgson quit and we convinced him to stay. We convinced the board to get out of his way and let him stay. We'd like to do that now too.
And just you, for the record, introduce yourself.
I'm Barbara Latt and I worked as assistant in the elementary school for 30, 40 years. I have never seen a student's personal form. Begin with the initial one. But I wasn't, I was at all the other meetings and he stepped down because the board doesn't get a longer income. That's the truth. And looking at what a principal can do, what our partners, what here does now. He's a good and decent man. He's a good student advocate, he's an inconvenience. He's a team builder. He's caring and always present. And he is being used at this whole thing. And if we are looking for skills, same. Better, whatever board thinks he needs to do work on, the man will do it. He has said he would love to sail.
Hello. Sorry. I'm not going to take a lot of your credit this time because I know this is time sensitive. I'm a student here. I'm a junior. My name is Morgan Hammel. Mr. Brody has done nothing but be amazing to our school. He's the reason why I got to have income and top four year. He's one of the only reasons why I've stayed in Tax Center where I didn't pay a loan load. But because of him, next year I will have my L and A and I will be able to go and do a job. Without him, I probably wouldn't have been able to do. He wants to be with his students. He likes to let them know what's important. And he cares about us. He cares about us more than some parents do. And for the school board to make a decision and not listen to the students' voices is a little bit hurtful because we're the ones who go to school every single day. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kaylee Damaris. I'm a student here. I'm also a junior. You asked, what are the strengths and weaknesses of BFUHS, a federal state university high school? And one of the biggest weaknesses of this school is the lack of stability that we have. If a principal is not given the chance to fully make a change, this is a school of many students. You can't change a student's opinion in a matter of five minutes or two years. I've been here through two principals. I've seen what works. And you need to give them a chance to catch up because that is what a principal has to do. That's what anybody has to do when they start a new job. You need to, you need the time to build the community. And it's built the community very quickly. And we've also begun to lose many teachers. But Mr. Brody has also been here through all of that. He's been here for the students. And that's very obvious because when do you see the students of this community come together like this except for a board? They never come together like this. And this is something that they think is very important. And that is something that should be recognized and not just swept in with the rug. We are the ones going to school here every day. We are the ones dealing with your decision.
Thank you. And I'm the board, want to speak, so I'd like everybody to speak. Go ahead.
Jack told me I'd be quiet tonight, but y'all know better. My name is Molly Mannor. I've been your school board chair for a couple of years. And I just want to say this, something is necessary in the board. I hope you appreciate hearing. I called Mr. Brody about three weeks ago and I've had a good relationship with John. Asked him if whatever's hearing was true, that he really wanted to keep the job, then I invited him to come to the board and talk to us. See what we can do to correct whatever has happened. There's things I'm not going to talk about here, but I invited him to come talk to us. And I don't, I don't want to talk bad about Mr. Brody. He's, I consider him a friend. But he hasn't come to talk to us. He hasn't, he hasn't, he answered my circle cell phone. He thought maybe he wants to bounce off me. But he hasn't said that he has some time with the board. So, I'm not disregarding any of your saying. I appreciate that everybody's very passionate about this. I want to make up their time. I just want you to know, as school board chair, I did contact him and I did ask him to come see us. And he, he has not done that.
Molly, have you seen the superintendent from last week?
So, I do not know what conversation he had. That, I don't manage that office. I don't know. But what I'm, what you're hearing and what I'm hearing is that the board is the one that, I read the letter that was handed to me when I came home at midnight. And I haven't heard back from Mr. Brody on coming in, talking to us about what you guys draw that stuff to do. We need him to come talk to us. And he hasn't done that. So, I'm going to leave the mic alone. You guys, I'll need your time. This is my being, but I just, I just wanted you to know that I initiated that and you did not report it.
Happy to give my name, but I'm Katie Dearborn. My son, Koby, is in school today. I kind of want to address what Molly just said a little bit. It's pretty disheartening to think that Mr. Brody doesn't feel that the board is approachable to be able to have whatever conversation it is. I'm hearing that he sent a letter of resignation because he's feeling some pressure that his contract was not going to be renewed. I feel like there's some type of, and I don't want to use this word because it concerns me, but it's almost bullying. Something happened with him and the board, the superintendent, that made him feel like his only out was probably writing this letter. I don't know from a professional standpoint if you resign versus if your contract is not renewed, how other employers view you, but that could have come into play. What I will say is when I think about a principal, I know that there's administrative duties. I know that there's professionalism that he has to display. I know that there's reporting he probably has to do. There's a slew of things. But one of the most important things that a principal has to do is have a relationship with students and the community. And in today's world, when you're looking to hire someone, you're not going to bat a thousand. You're not going to find somebody who's going to hit all of those marks. And one of the things that I've talked a lot about is the management of those growth areas that he displays. How were those managed? I know Chris was around, I think initially after he left. But what kind of support was John given with the consideration we were coming out of the board? So, I feel like there's a lot of factors that play in. I feel like there's some miscommunication between the board and Mr. Brody. And I really encourage the board to try to clear whatever error there is. If he's not coming to Molly, there's something else going on. And I really feel like you owe that to him. He's been great to our school. He was great under the leadership with Chris. There's so many examples. Everyone's here. Like, do the due diligence, go through the process and work through it so that everyone doesn't have to spend their time fighting for someone that I truly believe you all think is a good person. And if you have to put some extra effort into managing those growth areas, put the time in. It's obviously warranted.
Do we have anyone else available to step up to the mic tomorrow?
Hi. My name is Stephanie Mitchell. I had a daughter who graduated from this high school. My husband and I both graduated from this high school. I'm a past employee of the WNESU. And I spoke before. I 100% do not believe that John Brody wrote that letter willingly. I think he wasn't given a choice. I don't know if it was because of something the board set her did or if it was because of something the superintendent set her did. But I know, because I have had contact with him as well, he does not want to leave this job. He's afraid, and maybe this is part of why he hasn't spoken to Molly, that if he fights it for himself, that he will not be able to have a career after this. He feels that this is his only choice and it's being forced upon him. And it is completely inexcusable. Up there it says strengths and weaknesses of BFUHS. There's a weakness in the WNESU. So many employees have left this supervisory area. I'm one of them. And it's not because I wanted to. It's because I had no other choice. People are not treated well. They, I mean, I'm not going to lie. I went from when we started in August until after Thanksgiving break with no lunch. No lunch break. So, that's a problem. That's not okay. So, and that is just something to me, a little lowly error I had to deal with. I can only imagine what the principal of the high school has to deal with. So, one of the weaknesses is not just BFUHS, it's WNESU. We need to fix it. We cannot let someone, let John Brody go. It's not fair to the kids. That's the most important thing. It's not fair to the teachers. All the, I've heard one teacher say, "Oh, I'm glad he's gone." It's not fair to the community. It's a problem.
Thank you. Hold up just a second. I have one thing to run through. I said, my initial goal here was to have, have a conversation that led us to all understand what, what a principal does and what needed here. I'm feeling that that's been pretty well flushed, but we, I think it's a missed opportunity because I think you need to have it at some point. It wasn't my being, it was her first speech. But I agree with you. Is it would be a discussion, a meeting, a conversation, not as a community, but employees and board to those conversations that maybe know and brought and why. Maybe that's, maybe we're just not going to have that. But if there are other people that want to speak, let them have that. And we'll figure out where we go after everyone has it.
Thank you. I am not an employee. I'm a parent of three students in high school currently, a freshman, a junior, a senior.
And your name is?
Yeah. My name is Jenny Warren.
They want to hear your photograph.
It's awkward now. I want to be clear and anyone who correct me if I'm wrong. John Brody did not resign. We know he didn't resign. That has legal implications that did not happen here. We also know that John Brody was told his contract was going to be renewed. Again, correct me if I'm wrong. And so, when folks say to rest, yes, you're not, you're less employable, certainly at 63 years old, when you lose a job versus a totally legal job. So, unless you folks correct that, you're welcome to. That's the reality here, Mr. Brody. I think, I respect everyone here. I respect that I'm trying to, I couldn't do it. I respect you sitting there patiently when you're getting yelled at and people are pissed off at you. I respect that you can answer all questions. I do have two questions. I know I can answer them now. I know that. I hope you consider how important it is for this community to answer them soon. The first is, are you going to consider Mr. Brody as a candidate for what currently is an open position? We're entitled to know that answer, I think. And the second is, not the prior meeting, but the prior meeting. There was a suggestion that there was an open investigation. If that is not true, then I think Mr. Brody and the community deserve to know that there was not and there has been an open investigation into his role as principal leading up to what's happened now.
I'm not a member of this board. But I am, but I am a chair of the S U board. And I can only tell you that I have never heard of any investigation. And I was the first one to get lost on it. So, I'll just put that on the record. And so, and we have discussion with the superintendent as just general policies as a matter of record. When the decision is open, any qualified applicant can apply. And to the best of my knowledge, that would improve Mr. Brody, he is a qualified applicant. So, that's what I'm saying, that there is nothing, when somebody, just like the team decided to not renew their contract and then something, ever been a month later? Because it, well, it's already been, it's been set up, it's already been, school springs to notify. At that point, that person would be more than welcome to come. They'd be applying for their decision along with everyone.
I understand. But if Mr. Brody indicates to the board that he would like his job back with contract renewed in June, but it seems like we're jumping the gun, right? If the board is saying he made this decision and so we're moving on, but it seems to me if he says, "Here's why I made that decision. I felt forced into it. I want this job. The community supports me in this job." Then why are we jumping to look for somebody else unless you have another reason?
Well, I would say it's already been a notification. Then, I mean, I'm just telling you the process is, I'm not depending any of this board's done or not, okay? I'm just telling you what this process would be in any other district.
I think what we're saying ultimately is we're asking to skip that process is unnecessary. Once John reaches out to the board and communicates what he's communicated to all of us, which is he wants this job back and he wants his contract renewed in June. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Julie Torres. I teach standard at the high school and I've worked with John for 20 plus years, 23 years. And I'm all about the whole situation. But having said that, I'm not even going to touch it now. Mostly concerning, or I guess I'm just wondering, please, is why is it that we're in such a hot pursuit of a principal here? Forget all what Mr. Brody wants, if he wants to come back or not, say whatever. But there is a middle school, forgive me if anyone here is at the middle school, that's a train wreck. And they don't have any kind of leadership except for Henry. God bless him. And I've heard he's done an amazing job. But here we're like, hell, bet to get a principal in here for next year. Well, we just need to take care of this this year at the middle school that's a train wreck.
I'm Susan Swan. I live in the high school in Massacre. I've been here thirty-two years. At a recent board meeting, Chris.
At a recent board meeting, Chris Austin mentioned that in his tenure, there had been times when he had indicated that he would not be seeking a continuation of his contract, but had subsequently been talked out of it. In your address comments in that same meeting, David Clark stated he was probably one of the people who had helped talk Chris out of that multiple times. I bet that involved more than just a need to want to please come talk to us. That would lead me to believe that because that has not happened with Mr. Bradley, that the board and the superintendent can and can work to keep an administrator who had stated that they did not intend to seek another contract yet. To date, neither the board nor the superintendent has asked what, perhaps I'm incorrect in this statement, asked Mr. Bradley to rescind his letter, but have invited him to talk about it, but not necessarily asked him to rescind his letter. I'm not sure of the conversation that Molly had. However, that would lead me to believe that there are areas in Mr. Bradley's performance as principal that the board would like to see improved. Very anxious about asking the community what he can do different or what a new hire could do different. In an article that was published in Reform on 2/24, Mr. Bradley reported that it had been more than 20 years since the public had been asked what they wanted in principle and what they wanted the principal to do to make the school better. That's one of the purposes of the meeting forum tonight and of the thought exchange that was sent out by Kate O'Connor on February 16. Certainly, it's not necessarily to only ask for input of this nature when looking for a new principal. Certainly, that input can be taken from all parties that are concerned more often than just one of the new hires being considered. Over the last month or so, many people in the community have spoken up in favor of Mr. Bradley continuing in his role as the high school principal. A petition with over 1,020 signatures supports this. The board is asking the community what it wants to see in a principal. And over 1,020 signatures are supporting Mr. Bradley. And so that's a pretty good answer for a start. Additionally, many people, including former and current students, have already answered that question. What they want to see in the principal is Mr. Bradley. So instead of searching for a new one and contradicting what over 1,000 members of the community would like, I would urge the board to continue to collect the information from the community as mentioned above. What would you like to see in the principal? And I would urge the board to offer Mr. Bradley a contract, to engage him, not just invite him to come, but hold to him, and talk him out of it, like Chris was talking about it. And to provide him with a contract that has clear and measurable goals and expectations that include the input from the community as well as input from the board. I further urge that Mr. Bradley be given guidelines for improved performance and a supportive mentor and framework which will provide him with an opportunity to move forward and meet those measurable expectations. As mentioned above, even if the superintendent has not worked to retain John in that position, I would suggest that Mr. Boss is not the right person to provide Mr. Bradley with the proper supportive atmosphere to guide that success. The community has spoken and is speaking tonight. And the message is a resounding vote for Mr. Bradley. So let's come together as a community and a board to build on the energy that John has, the love and the pride of Bellis the love and the pride for Bellis Wall Union High School that John has, and the strengths that he has, to build an even stronger leadership at the high school that involves everything that we have for input and that embodies the measurable goals that come from the community input and that the board is seeking. Thank you.
Hey Jen, we can't hear what you're saying.
How much time do we have? Okay, I had no idea what was, that's great. We still have plenty of time to continue this. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? And is there interest in proceeding with our originally scheduled process? If there is not, kind of quite. Does anybody else want to speak?
Okay, so Amanda Demarest. I am an employee of the district. I also wait junior, who you've already previously seen she was like this. But, okay, so. There's the petition. I know it can't be like totally formal or whatever because any reason. But it's got over 1,000 signatures, which is like four times the population of the student body here. I would preview, oh, I wanted to tell you, Jack, I am your fact TV girl.
Yep.
And I was the one saying that I'm concerned about a replacement because I also have a student at the middle school in that train wreck who does not have a principal. But that concern is only if we really follow through with getting rid of Mr. Bradley, because I don't think we need to get rid of him at all. That's my only concern. Like, why are we sending someone out the door who wants to be here and is good for here with this lingering fact that we might not find a replacement? So, sorry, I rushed from work to here. I didn't have time to prepare. But in a previous meeting too, it was stated a bunch of facts about rankings and such like that, about how Mr. Bradley's performing and our rankings and stuff. But I also want to make sure that it is well known, Mr. Bradley is coming off of our COVID years, which is still in play. I myself have an older child who dropped out like less than six months away from graduating at another high school because he did not want to sit in front of the computer. You're also talking to a student body, and I'm so sorry if this brings up emotional hardship for anybody. A student body who's also lost peers tragically. They have had so much to conquer, and just having more turnover is just insane. I personally love that Mr. Bradley knows our kids. Mr. Bradley knows Johnny is not acting like himself. And maybe Johnny's going through something that needs to be looked into because he's known Johnny for a long time. That makes me feel safer as a mom, knowing that he knows these kids. On that petition, of the 1,000-plus signatures, all I saw was he bought cleats for my students so they could play soccer. He's the reason why I stayed. He's the reason why I graduated. He's done this. My mom doesn't even live in the state, and she knows Mr. Bradley because he has been at every musical performance, theatrical performance, and all the sports. It's amazing how much he's here. So, I'm thinking that's my thing there. Kayla, did I forget anything? She's my brain.
If he leaves, he's taking teachers with him.
Yes, you're gonna lose a lot. Oh, that's my other thing. I've been here for almost five years, and I have watched this district become a shipwreck. I have been saying it is a Titanic. I have been here through business payroll issues. I've been here through being riffed as a para. I have been up here for a whole lot, and I'm seeing it just going downhill. And the only reason why I'm staying here is because I'm not gonna leave this district and leave my children behind in it, where they have to attend. My question though, is the school board's not asking Mr. Bradley to consider withdrawing it? Why wouldn't they do that? And is it possible that the school board was caught off guard and there could have been a miscommunication between the superintendent and the board, with the board being caught off guard on the 1/24 meeting where it finally came to light about this letter? So there could be a miscommunication between the superintendent and the board that might be worth considering. But, yes, I am just a para. But, oh, and everything that, everything that I have heard, being your fact TV girl there, I've had a lot of people come up to me saying, I can't believe you stood up and spoke, and that's very brave, especially being an employee and having to worry about retaliation, which I certainly hope will not be the case because I'm here as a mom, and that comes first. I can get a job anywhere else. I'm telling you right now, like, I could get a job anywhere else. I'm here. I want to stay here. But the only negative thing that I have heard is from one person that is related to a board member. That is the only negative thing that I've heard about Bradley. Everything else has been positive and astonishment that this has happened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I'm gonna go back to this. Maybe I'm not going to go back to this screen here. Whoops. No, it's fine. But I do want to, I do want to say that when we commented about what a principal does, several of you have mentioned some, mentioned important items that a principal does. And I want to put those on the screen at some point in the future. But I think we ought to start, start to build, you know, a structure of what we see in spring. You articulated that very well. And, you know, what are the other pieces that are out there? Some cases I noticed, although they're not having to be mentioned. So if you'll stand up and just give your name, and we'll continue this.
Hi, oh, that's a lot. I'm an athletic trainer. I don't really do much of this, but.
So you work in the school here, do you?
Yeah, I'm an athletic trainer here. Luckily, I'm here because of Mr. Bradley. I came from New Jersey. I've worked in New Jersey for a few years. I'm born and raised in New Jersey. I left New Jersey because of, I would say, political side of things. I went to real township. I went there, I worked there. And a sad part of working in a school in education, a lot of people see people as numbers. In New Jersey, the kids were too scared to go to the principals to talk to them because the principals were too scared. The principals weren't there with open doors to let, I would say, us workers go and sit down and have a friendly conversation and talk. Two would just let us know what we're feeling. I felt like a number there. I felt like anything I wanted, anything I needed. I was too scared to go and ask for it. And that's at a school where I'd have 16 teams per season, and there was only one of me, and I'd have eight games going on at once. And not once have I ever seen a principal actually come sit at a game. The one time was to drive one of the principals with me because baby was in our house. So he would just come, and they actually complained about coming two games to watch. Bradley is actually the first, and I would have to say, coming here, I came and sat and had lunch with them just to meet everybody because I was interviewed, because I'm from Jersey. So driving up here for an interview is hard. But coming here, sitting down, having lunch with them, made me the most comfortable. Bradley has been the most open. I can go to him and talk to him about everything and anything. Especially with the new job, new spot here, new posting here. I've never felt so comfortable. Usually I turn red, which I probably am. Usually I get nervous. But for him, I could go walk into his room, take a seat, and just talk and ask for anything. And in other jobs at other high schools, you can't do that. But here, he's just so open, so friendly, and you can go and you can talk to him. I've never seen so many people who want someone so bad as Bradley to be here. In New Jersey, you would never see anybody trying to fight for a principal. You would never see that. But here, and I know in the past that he wasn't, he was forced to resign. He was put in a position where something must go on, bad heads, this and that. I've had friends who've dealt with this to the point where you're either asked to resign or you get fired. So I think he was put in the position of, you guys said, hey, we're not gonna sign your contract, offer you for next year. So come give me a weekend, after the weekend, think it through. If you don't hand me a notice of resigning, you're gonna be on the fire list. That's what I know in the past with friends in New Jersey, because they do it all the time. But I feel like that's where we're at. I mean, again, I've never seen so many people in the community who want him here, and I think he should stay.
Thank you.
Hi.
I know you are too slow. Are you coming down to? That's fine, I just didn't know you were speaking. Go ahead.
So I'm Starlin. I'm actually from the Trainwreck Middle School. And I have to say that losing our principal made our school the train wreck that it is today. And I think I speak for everyone when I say that Mr. Bradley has done a lot for this high school. I will be here next year, and I think that Mr. Bradley, I'm asking you guys to bear with me because I'm all over the place. But I think that he's a really good part in this high school. I think he's helped a lot of people, especially my friend Faith Lee. She goes through a lot, and he's always been there. We're very grateful for Mr. Bailey, though. He's very helpful. But I think that Mr. Bradley helps us all in a way, and it makes us all feel comfortable. So I think that there's a lot of people here that would be losing a lot if he left. And I'm asking that you just please consider the people that actually have to go here every day and that have to deal with the consequences of your decision and your actions. Losing him would hurt a lot of kids here, and I think that it would make a really big difference in attendance and grades. I think that we should keep Mr. Bradley, and that a lot of people would be losing a lot if he left. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jessica Lymore. I work at the middle school or the train wreck. I don't consider it that, but we are going through a rough patch. I wanted to just say something that I was hoping that the superintendent or one of the school board members might have said. I've been here for about half an hour, and I've already heard a couple of para educators mention, they're just para educators. You are not just para educators. You were a part of the staff and a part of the faculty. I hope any of you who come out and say, stand up and say that, realize that you were not just a para educator.
Absolutely, thank you. As the risk of trying to turn this back into a meeting I thought it was going to be, I want to just do a thought exercise with you all. Because you've articulated some of the stuff that I wanted to do. Over there. What's a principal? I've heard several things. I've heard a principal is a school investor. That is correct. All right? Let's get down to it. There. That's it. So one thing we want from a principal is a school investor, correct? Is that what I've heard from you all? All right. We know that, so that's a nice. We know that it's important to people that he be approachable. We know from what we've heard, really the form of students and teachers is clearly important. Is that right? That was very loud, right? Okay, team builder, so let's use that.
Jack, you're the headboard too.
Pardon? Why did you come over here? Because you know how to just pop your eye down. Okay. My hand, buddy, won't get any better if you stand. If you chase anyone's money. You can see I'm playing it over there. Someone would say, "Let's go." So, school investor, approachable, team builder, popular with teachers and with students. That's the answer. Does that mean you're also a school investor?
So I think what everybody understands is the most important thing in principle is students. And everything has like that in there.
Yeah, yeah, that's why you're not confused.
So that's all to each other. And he is, he knows his, everything there is one problem. I think that the board and as superintendent, they're gonna have us to students. Whether they're do it.
Well, I'm glad that you don't have spoken, so come right us by here and repeat.
I have spoken just so.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. My friend, my friend, I am, I do deal with your, what was your decision? I'm going to deal with it every single night, every single year. And. Yeah, yeah, I actually have. And I've been saying that this is what we're looking for. Anybody face to face in the interview and pretend that they do, that they see that. But you don't, you don't, you don't. But you guys, and I'm seeing one more. You are not seeing that not just looking for somebody to have these qualities. They need same thing. And then they're supposed to turn, turn, turn around, play those simple ones, or something like that. But you're trying to start scratch by having our deal instead of that community trust. Over half of the bell's fall, population has signed that graduation. That should more power than seems to have. And so starting to scratch, we should show them what we have. I've been, I've been well, well, or while, while Mr. Hudson was our, was our principal. And I feel that we might better believe somebody who has, has learned, learned this, this year. And he's been a veteran for so, so long. Because if you bring somebody, how, how, yeah. If you can bring somebody somewhere else that has dealt, dealt this community, we're going to reduce all of that. If Mr. Broccoli, he's not taking teachers with him, let's take these students with him. Our, our, our needs. As this body, I see it first hand and first that way. I've seen my, my student, my student Broccoli. And I've heard from him, well, most of these students want to, want to support. And it is extremely important. And then I think that I, uh, to Mr. Broccoli, it's personal, not, not special.
All right, well, I think we've done two things here, here. Uh, I don't think we can pass the A and S. Go, 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 go. I, I hope that nobody feels threatened by, by, manipulated in any way, but that's not the category. And then you'll go that this, this, this is not, not more than this, not, not this, go over this.
... And then we, you know, we're members of the, of the organization. We, we believe in the eleven, having, having, you know, to have, have, just one year and for our, she'll be able to even start talking about it.
Uh, I want to do all of that. This, this is how, you know, so, so they connect as a, as happening around here. I sent, uh, chair a notice of, of, again, again, first, uh, of my cookbook, uh, what you can do with your facilities and things, and, and talked about new leadership. And, and then said, you know, are you looking for, are you, like, you're looking for that deal, that thing, make a decision and then, you know, clear the very, your, your, instead, are, are you looking for accountants, really, really, because your constituents do a fantastic result, you know, are you looking for a cheerleader, for the community, or for school? Are you looking for a, a teaching group teacher? So-called model, so, so to, you, 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 no, no, that model looks, that, that, uh, and there's, and model, so, so, overall, that's, that's what it was, that's, is, is the new community, you know, your, 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 like, I got jumped out from the community, and then I'm like, I am there, and, 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 I go with, with model, my, my, take take whatever, some, that's model, I, 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 so, so, that's what I, I, generally, these guys, you didn't do the same thing, and I did it, unless you shouldn't, if you didn't have agenda, if you didn't have something, if you didn't have a model, if you didn't even talk about that, just, just, right, and now, now, you do it, and I, I, so, I hope that, that's, alright, this is a, this is a really, for us, and, and, this, now, now, I thought I would mind you, I, I, what you mean, you're basically, I, I, you said that.
And by, 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 um, I, I, I heard, I think, I got that, is a, a, we're around, we're in the same city, local meeting, it's my pleasure to see somebody in the community who had, um, made an admission to, to have, to, to, on, 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 contract, or, or, and that, and he voted on, not just by, 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 all the time, but, but, members, so, if you can please stick around, I, I've had a long night, I've had a long day, but, I can stick around, I, I, tonight, I can make a difference.
You know, Mr. Member of the school board, you're really, really used to, to hear appearances, you can't, can't, like, though, that's, what you can't imagine, you can't remember, it's, it's really not, I'm really, really, on my mind, that, that, where, where, with you and your colleagues, a lot, a lot of that don't work, but, you know, it's up to you.
Well, Jack Prior is correct, right, I'm a member of the school board, my name is Dave David Clark, of West, I've been, I've been, years, and, uh, uh, Samantha, uh, my pension, you were, N A A, that is my name, and, uh, I've heard, I've heard clearly, what Jack just said, and then respond to that, well, not about the N A A, just the model, I say Samantha, and I, I've had some X R R A A nomination, I love anybody else, you can, I say his board has been, been, a touch big, big community, but I have, and, I think I touched earlier, the, the, I, I, I explained that Samantha, that, 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 and, and N A A, and I was playing, and, and, I'm, 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 for most people, for the room here, here, I, I, N A A, John Brody, services, has that principle, and certainly, I, I, I respect, uh, differentiating by N A A, from, from, N A A, my, 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 the, the, member of this school board, I, I have a lot of occasion to help, help, sure, sure, we have continuity with a leadership, uh, on this fall, at school reunion, next school year, here regardless of who that N A A is, uh, obviously, I will hold this way, like, I would be here, I, I, I'm just speaking to this, prior, I'm concerned, I'm, I, I, I can, and runs, like, this, um, yes, yes, this is school board meeting, and I, and I think it's a very fortunate characterization, the language, I suggest, as, as, to lay was, was, P P, worn, that's the key word, worn, as a community meeting, with, with, uh, school board, or, you know, his independence, and I've been sitting in there, because, quite, bluntly, I'm a, 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 I'm, certainly, I'm, I'm, at this table, to, to say, I don't want to say, um, but I like, feel very strongly, that, that it's a big mistake to create a fundamental, that's why you're in this room, I, and, and, the, the leadership, and, and your, your, and, and the community up here, so, facing off against each other, I don't think I, I think, they, they love the exercise, so I exercise my role, as a board member, who can make up his mind on his own, to sit up in the audience, and sense that here what was going on, I don't, I don't, I don't, I, at this point, I, it's a fact, Samantha, I have an interesting point about N A A, that, that I might be going on, and so, and so I'm standing at this mic, and, and, when I'm not, which was, so, I, 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 I set up a back, or, or, press, press, I stop, I, 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 thank you, you're, you're out.
I know, so, very, very, I, 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 my email, everybody, is that everybody is kind of sitting together, but, but, just looking at N A A, board meeting, it had, had to get a board meeting, that, that's why the, the, what it is, uh, sort of, uh, when questions, questions, then, you know, uh, uh, yes, I don't.
Hi, Joey, my daughter is a sophomore, and I just had a, observations, uh, on what I wrote, um, and once, as I say, I have come around, and I listened to, uh, Mr. Brody, um, talk about the importance of the mental health, uh, you, you, this, this, and, and one, one, my, 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 the, 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 I, I don't necessarily move it that, um, other than, uh, and then, further, there were, uh, my other thought, and, and, was that, uh, in, in our, as, 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 list, I think, I probably, like, so, there, there, we need one, one, T T builder, because, and there, and there, Brody, was built, like, trading, T T, so, I, 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 so, I, I, I said to me, how, how people, or, how many people, how about, how many people, my, my, teachers, um, so, my, uh, process is, T T builder, number two, um, and, 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 so, I, 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 so, it's, 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 I, 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 so, it's, 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 I have to say, I think you're great.
Okay. I'm, 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 this is one of the, my, 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 as much as, as these things, I don't, and, and, I'm having to, but, 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 and, and, we don't, we don't, and, 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 so, back, back, I, 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 and, and, we don't, 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 if the board does not see that, 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 then, 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 to, to open, 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 okay, thank you.
And, and, if, if you, if you don't go, anyone's in the house, then, then, you, 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 okay, David Clark, I thought I was all done speaking, and then I got back to my seat and realized I wasn't all done speaking, and it's about that N A A again, and this is what I want to point out to the room, and, and that is, I chaired this board, uh, pardon me, I chaired the supervisor union board, a year and a half, when Chris Pratt and David Herry walked out on us, with less than a week to go before school opened, and I got to tell you something, Andy Brody saved our bacon, big time, by walking in here and assuming a very difficult role, as superintendent of schools, and certainly, hasn't, um, so we say, made everybody happy, and, um, there's plenty of room for improvement with Andy as well, however, he stepped up on the plate at an absolute critical juncture, for our community, as it happens, drafting, the Westminster rocking hand, and irregardless of how much I hate him tonight, um, I want you to realize that, um, Andy has stood up for this community as well, and I just think that people ought to recognize that, whether they, they, they care their knowledge of the, 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 uh, uh, I certainly think Andy, Andy, the leadership that he's in the Westbury later, and, and thanks, Andy.
Yes, yes. You know, we, uh, uh, we, 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 I'm, 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 so, I actually think that we have, uh, not, not, like, much of our, like, second daughter, Lydia, Lydia's silence, um, she has page, because she's, 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 so, the question, is, is, what, what, I'm, 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 so, that's, that's the one, from, 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 the, 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 have, have, kind of, taken attention to, this, this, the only thing, to make sure that we are, 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 just, just.
Yeah, and I, I, I've, I've been, I've been, I, 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 uh, we, 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 I'm, 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 someone's down yet, don't tell me if anybody's asking me to speak.
Hi, hi, if you've been here.
Oh, yeah.
Tell me, tell us, well, um, I'm, 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 can you make them, put the mic down, so that we can hear you? Sure, sure. Um, so, so, then, then, if my, 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 okay, my, uh, the late, 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 nine, nine, uh, give, give, da, da, first, first, so, I'm, 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 it's, 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 uh, so, we've had some, I, I, two, two, we were, we were, uh, uh, that, that, I started to, 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 but, looking at my step, over, to, 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 Mason, you're next.
So, I, I, uh, can, yeah, yeah, actually, actually, you speak more normally, but I don't need anybody to speak in link, with, with, uh, sign of comment, oh, I'm, 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 I'm,